He's not paying attention.
This time I'd like to call order the February 24, 2015 Meeting of the Savile Board of Education. Mr. Board Secretaries, meeting been advertised according to the Open Public Meeting Act.
Yes, it has, Mr. Mackinon.
Can you, everybody please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get a roll call.
Mr. Baucka.
Here.
Mrs. Backo.
Here.
Mrs. Blum.
Here.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Here.
Mr. Syak.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Mr. Mackinon.
Can you please read the resolution to go into execs, please?
I first need them all.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Backo? No?
It was Beth and John, so your pitch.
So make it buddy.
Made it. Whereas Section 80 Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 BL 1975 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be reserved by the Board of Education, Borough, Savile, County, and Middlesex, State of New Jersey as follows: The public shall be excluded from discussion of and reaction upon herein after specified subject matter; general nature of subject matter to be discussed is as follows: Attorney Klein privilege, various legal issues associated with the Savile War Memorial High School Football Program, personnel, including but not limited to agenda items; is anticipated this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists; this resolution shall take effect immediately. Mr. Baucka.
Yes.
Mrs. Backo.
Yes.
Mrs. Blum.
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Yes.
Mr. Syak.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Mackinon.
Yes. Board will now convene to execs. Order of the February 24, 2015 Meeting of the Savile Board of Education. Everybody please stand and recite the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Board Secretary, this meeting been advertised according to the Open Public Meeting Act.
Yes, it has, Mr. Mackinon.
Then have a roll call, please.
Mr. Baucka.
Here.
Mrs. Backo.
Here.
Mrs. Blum.
Here.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Here.
Mr. Syak.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto.
Here.
Mrs. Trapp.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
And Mr. Mackinon.
Could you please summarize the executive session?
This evening in executive session, the Board of Education discussed, under Attorney Klein privilege, various legal issues associated with the Savile War Memorial High School Football Program and personnel, including but not limited to agenda items.
Thank you. Dr. Labby, you have several presentations to see.
Okay, Mrs. Mackinon, we do have several presentations. As everyone knows, we are approaching standardized testing, and obviously, it's been in the news quite a bit. Our students will be participating next week in the PARC assessment to measure how well they're progressing with the Common Core state standards. Dr. Shettyack gave a wonderful presentation a couple of weeks ago with regard to both the Common Core state standards as well as the PARC assessment, including within that the schedule for testing and our standard operating procedure for parents that wish to refuse to have their children take the test. We've asked Dr. Shettyack to present to you, the board tonight, an abbreviation of that presentation. So, Dr. Shettyack?
As Dr. Labby said, I'll just give you a brief overview of the schedule for the upcoming PARC exam and give you some information about the parents who want to refuse to have their children tested. Okay, the PARC assessment is in two separate parts. There's the performance-based assessment and the end-of-year. The PBA or Performance-Based Assessment, we have a window in which to administer this from March 2 through March 27. Up here, we have the schedule of how we will be administering it for the different grade levels. Okay. I'll start with the first grade level that will be administered the test, which is grade three, which will begin on Monday. Okay, there will be five days of testing, it's three days of language arts, and two days of math. Okay, the following week, the middle school will be testing. Again, it's five days, three days of language arts, two days of math. The week of March 16, both the high school and Samson Upper Elementary School will be testing. Again, all schools will have three days of math and two days of language ar-- I'm sorry, three days of language arts and two days of math. The end-of-year exam, which is a little bit shorter, will take place from April 27 to May 22. Okay, and for that test, we are starting the first week with the high school, so as not to interfere with AP exams, which occur later on in May. The following week, the middle school will be testing, and then both Samson and the elementary schools will be testing the week of May 12. Okay, how much time will the test take? Time varies from grade level to grade level and from unit to unit. Okay, up here is just a summary of the estimated testing time for each of the different sections of the test. Okay, we can take a look right now. Let's look at grades four and five, English Language Arts. Unit one is 75 minutes, unit two is 90 minutes, and unit three is 60 minutes. That's for the test that will be administered in March. For the end-of-year exam in Language Arts, there's only one section, and that's 75 minutes. Okay, the math section for grades four and five, there are two sections for the end of the year at 75 minutes each. Okay, the middle school, these are the time ranges there, from anywhere from 60 minutes up to 90 minutes. There's one day of Language Arts, that's 90 minutes. Algebra I is up there for grade eight students who are enrolled in a full year of algebra. They will not take the eighth-grade PARC test, math test. They will take the Algebra I test instead. And the testing times for the high school are here. There are three different high school-level math tests that are given, dependent upon which course the child is enrolled in. It's Algebra I, Geometry, or Algebra II. Students who are enrolled in any other math classes are not taking the PARC exam. Okay, there's been a lot of chatter out there about parents who want to refuse to have their children take the test or opt out. There is no real opt-out. Okay, the state has made that very clear, that parents cannot opt out. But what Savile is doing, if parents would like to refuse to have their child take the test, they must send a letter into the building principal, no later than tomorrow, must be handwritten with a hand signature on it, and those students will then be, they will sit in their assigned testing room during the test, and they will be allowed to read a book. The book should be pre-approved. Okay, if the child does not attend school on a day of testing, they will be marked absent. But if we do have a letter from the parent refusing that the child, refusing the test for the child, that student, when it comes time for makeups, will not have to sit for makeups. And if a child does not sit for the test, if they refused it, and they're sitting in the room during the original test session, they will not have to sit for makeups. If a student comes in late after the testing, the child will be marked tardy, dependent on the time they arrive at school. So that is the plan that we have for the testing, which starts next Monday. And I have to say, we're ready to go. Okay, we're ready to go, and we're kind of excited about it. We're looking forward to it. So, does anyone have any questions?
Anybody from the board have any questions? Michael, just since this is an interesting subject, does anybody from the public have a question related to what Dr. Shettyack just briefed us on? Thank you.
All of this information is available on the district website. There is, the entire presentation from February 10 is up there, and this was just a small portion of that. Okay? Thank you.
I am actually giddy about the test. Our second presentation tonight is one that is performed normally twice a year. According to the Anti-Bullying Statute and other regulations within the New Jersey Administrative Code, we have to report to the Board of Education and public the number of incidents that are reported as part of our Electronic Violence and Vandalism Report that we submit to the Department of Education, as well as HIV information that we support twice a year to the Department of Education. So, I've asked Ms. Reese, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Operations and Compliance, to present to you Period One of our EVVRS and HIV report, and she's also going to go over with you several changes to our extracurricular policy, our student extracurricular policy, as well as our student intramural competition and interscholastic competition policies. Ms. Reese?
Okay, good evening, Dr. Labby, Mr. Mackinon, members of the board, and members of the Savile community. As Dr. Labby mentioned, this is going to be two kind of separate but related presentations. The first one is on the EVVRS, the HIV Period One Report, and some related policy and procedure The EVVRS reporting. Violence, vandalism, substance abuse, and HIV data needs to be reported to the community during a public BOE meeting at least twice each school year for the following periods. Period One, July 1 to December 31, is reported during one of the following months, January through June. Period Two, January 1 through June 30, reported during one of the following months, July through December. It consists of incident category by schools and number of confirmed HIV incidents by schools. 2014-15, EVVRS, is as follows. School, the high school, violence 19, vandalism 0, 0, substance abuse 12. The middle school, violence 2, vandalism 0, weapon 0, substance abuse 0. SUES, violence 0, vandalism 0, weapon 0, substance abuse 1. Eisenhower, violence 1, 0 for all other categories. Arlyth, Truman, and Wilson, 0 for all categories. For totals as follows. Violence 22, vandalism 0, weapon 0, substance abuse 13 for the district. This is for Report Period One. We also report the HIV status. These are for confirmed HIV status incidents. School confirmed HIV, the high school, seven. The middle school, two. SUES, none. Eisenhower, one. Arlyth, Truman, Wilson, none. For district total of 10 for Report Period One. I'm now going to move on to the second presentation, which is Proposed Policy and Procedural Changes Regarding Students Who Participate in Extracurricular or Intramural/Interscholastic Activities. Policy Revisions to P. 6145 Extracurricular Activities. Revisions to the P. 6145 Extracurricular Activities include the following. Pupils sign a conduct agreement which includes an anti-hazing clause. A separate agreement must be executed for every activity in which a pupil participates. Pupils will also complete a computer module regarding the definition, danger, and inappropriateness of hazing. Parents, guardians, they will attend a mandatory meeting held by the advisor of each competitive activity, including cheerleading, to discuss harassment, intimidation, bullying, and hazing, in addition to other pertinent items. In addition, the parent guardian, they will co-sign his or her child's conduct agreement, and they will sign a consent agreement for his or her child to participate in the activity. The advisors, the advisors will complete a computer module on harassment, intimidation, and bullying on the General Compliance Network. This must be completed upon initial employment and twice in a five-year period as per state statute. The advisor will also complete a computer module on hazing on the General Compliance Network. This must be completed upon initial employment as an advisor and annually thereafter. Advisors will also coordinate a parent-pupil meeting, which must, at minimum, review participation requirements and provide training on harassment, intimidation, bullying, and hazing. The advisors must also sign an acknowledgement indicating receipt of a copy of this policy and Board Policy 4119.24, which defines appropriate staff-pupil relations, including but not limited to pupil supervisory requirements. Policy Revisions to P. 6145.1 and .2 Intramural and Interscholastic Competition. All parents, guardians, and pupils must also complete all requirements of Policy 6145 as they pertain to extracurricular activities. In addition, revisions to Policy 6145.1 and 6145.2 include the following. Coaches, they must complete a computer module on harassment, intimidation, and bullying on the General Compliance Network. This must be completed upon initial employment and twice in a five-year period as per state statute. Coaches must also complete a computer module on coaching and tazing on the General Compliance Network. This must be completed upon initial employment as a coach and annually thereafter. Coaches must complete the mandatory professional development as per NJSIAA regulations, the current CPR AED certification, the heat illness prevention, concussion in sports, fundamentals of coaching, first aid, health, and safety for coaches courses by the NFHS. Coaches must attend a mandatory coaches' meeting facilitated by the athletic director or his/her designee to review district expectations, policy, and procedures, including supervision. Coaches must also coordinate a team meeting for pupils and their parent guardian, which at minimum must review eligibility requirements and provide training on harassment, intimidation, bullying, and hazing. Coaches will also receive a coaches' handbook and sign an acknowledgement of receipt of said handbook. The handbook shall also contain a copy of this policy, Board Policy 6145 regarding extracurricular activities, and Board Policy 4119.24, which defines appropriate staff-pupil relations, including but not limited to pupil supervisory requirements, as well as their obligations, responsibilities, and liabilities as a coach. The implementation timeline is immediately upon approval of revisions to the board policy. We have put a recommendation forward for first reading in this board meeting.
Any board questions?
Thank you.
Okay, pressing on, correspondence. Everybody should have received both the monthly technology and maintenance work order reports. Anybody have any questions about those? Hearing none. Everybody should have received and reviewed the minutes of the regular and executive session of February 3. Anybody have any questions, comments, deletions, or additions to those minutes?
Mr. Mackinon, I will be abstaining on February 3's minutes since I was not here.
Okay, get that, Mr. Board Secretary? Seeing no comments about deletions, additions, I'll accept the motion to accept in five minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Need a roll call vote.
Mr. Baucka.
Yes.
Mrs. Backo.
Yes.
Mrs. Blum.
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Yes.
Mr. Syak.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes, but exception.
Abstaining, right? Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
And Mr. Mackinon.
Yes, now for our favorite part, the Student Council Representative Report.
Hi, Student Council is partaking in Read Across America. We are going to go to Truman and read to the little kids. That's about it, we're not doing much. I'm being serious. That's it.
It's all that's going around campus?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. No Parent Involvement Committee, District Colites, Mrs. DePinto.
The fourth grade Talented and Gifted students are enhancing the climate of positive energy at the Samson Upper Elementary School. They have made posters to advertise their bucket-filling business depicting students taking leadership roles and reaching out to help others. Also in the cafeteria tags, students have created an exhibit entitled, "There Is No Sense in Violence." Next to which, Mrs. Mayhew places photographs of all the SUES students who have been caught filling someone's buckets, whether it was helping another classmate or brightening someone's day. The student ambassadors will have a special visit from Elijah's Promise, a nonprofit organization which offers many services to those in need. Student ambassadors will learn all about the many contributions which Elijah's Promise offers to the community, as well in which ways ambassadors themselves can assist others. Congratulations to two of Savile War Memorial High School Jewelry Medals won students who have received recognition through the annual Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Rachel Turner and Rob Kern have earned an honorable mention and a Silver Key Award respectively. We would like to congratulate Elijah Wisnowski on being included in an exhibition on Loring Augustine Gallery in New York City. Elijah created a small painting on paper that was shown in the gallery through February 1. During the week of January 12, over 90 students in grades two and three joined in a week of fun at Truman School Theater Week. Under the direction of Tannen's Law Productions, these students performed in a full-scale musical production of The Golden Goose. Rehearses were held each day after school, and then the children performed for the entire school on Friday morning. Later that evening, there was a performance for over 300 parents and invited guests. Come and join us for next year's performance, the Pied Piper's Wild West Show. It's going to be lots of fun.
Thank you, Mrs. DePinto. Dr. Labby, can you please take us to your report?
Thank you, Mr. Mackinon. If I can direct your attention, Board of Education members, to the superintendent's report. Let's start with Vision 2030 Finance and Infrastructure. Item number 11, we're asking you to amend a contract with Communication Speech Therapy. They're an agency that we were using to recoup some sessions that were missed due to some employee absences. Unfortunately, we had many sessions to recoup, so we're asking you to amend that contract to the amount given there. That can be, on item number 13, we're asking you to approve some trips for the Samson Upper Elementary School, Title I, actually, no, for board buses for Title I tutorial program. You can see the cost there, that's found on page three. Number 14, we are asking you to approve additional student trips with transportation for students at the Samson Upper Elementary School, particularly our Talented and Gifted Program. That's on pages four and five. And number 15, on page five, we're asking you to approve an out-of-district placement for a student with a disability. Any questions on Vision 2030 Finance and Infrastructure?
Mr. DeAndre, I just need to abstain on the check for Premier Printing and the Arts and Education Center.
Oh, all right, here we go.
Yeah, so good. Okay. Line six. Number six. Vision 2030 Student Achievement. Item number one, we're asking you to approve the February HIV report. That can be found on pages six and seven. Item number two, we are asking you to approve another revision to the 2014-15 calendar. Unfortunately, we had to close school last Tuesday, and as indicated on the calendar, the next day that we would take would be May 22. Item number three, approval of several Savile Middle School activities. That can be found on page seven. There's also going to be a couple of different blood drives. So item number four is addressing one of those that will take place at the Savile War Memorial High School. You can find that on page seven. And then items five through seven, additional school activities, and like I said, including another blood drive, and those all can be found on page seven. Any questions with regard to Vision 2030 Student Achievement? Vision 2030 Governance. Item number one, several weeks ago, we asked our Board of Education to approve Policy 1330, and that's the use of school facilities, as well as a regulation to go along with it. We are asking our Board of Education members now to approve that policy and regulation revision for a second and final reading.
Wait.
Item number two.
Mrs. Backo.
Yes.
I had an issue with a line on that first policy.
Yes.
So I had--
Mr. Syak, would you like to comment further on that?
Yeah, Mrs. Backo brought to my attention, when we adjusted the regulation, we changed the first sentence to, from PTA, talking about PTAs and PTOs, which of course, we would never charge, to nonprofit organizations, which now, under the new policy, we have the ability to charge. But item number three in the reg says, "The above stated organizations are exempt from payment of all fees." That should not be there. So as an amendment, I would ask that we strike item number three on that regulation, and then just renumber everything sequentially from there.
Okay. Anybody have any objection to that?
And thank you, Mrs. Backo.
Thank you, Mr. Syak. Item number two on Vision 2030 Governance, Ms. Reese just gave a presentation on the policies listed there. We're asking the board to approve a first reading for Policy 6145 Extracurricular Activities and Policy 6145.1, .2 Intramural Competitions and Interscholastic Competitions. That can be found on page eight.
And the Policy Committee also met and discussed those policies and approved the changes that Mrs. Reese reported out on earlier.
Any questions with regard to Vision 2030 Governance? Okay, and finally, on Vision 2030 Personnel, as we sometimes do, we do have some retirements, and I'd like to read a couple of things with regard to some of the people that are retiring. As you can see here, we have a one paraprofessional at the Arlyth Elementary School who is retiring. Debbie Cooper is a confidential secretary to the Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Shettyack. She is also retiring. And Ms. Kathleen Stricker is a fourth-grade science, mathematics, and social studies teacher at the Samson Upper Elementary School. So I'd like to begin with Ms. Stricker. While we think of Mrs. Kathy Stricker, when we think of Mrs. Kathy Stricker, we think of consistency, dedication, and tradition. Kathy is an impressive teacher who puts forth much effort and hard work to develop her student skills in the areas of mathematics, science, and social studies. Mrs. Stricker, who was selected as Truman's-- Mrs. Stricker, who was selected as Truman's Teacher of the Year for the 2002-2003 school year, is a dedicated teacher who teaches with her heart and soul. With twelve years of perfect attendance in her personnel record, she has provided her students with the consistency, support, and guidance that they need to succeed as scholars. Kathy began her career as a home economics teacher at Sayerville War Memorial High School back in 1977. After teaching in Freehold and Averdeen, and then taking a short break to raise her three sons, she returned to education twenty-seven years ago as a basic skills teacher at the Eisenhower Elementary School. Kathy continued to share her knowledge with students at the Truman Elementary School before moving to the Samsel Upper Elementary School upon its opening. Mrs. Stricker believes that students should develop a foundation of math skills before relying on technology to help them add, subtract, multiply, and divide. And she uses her many years of experience to help make math logical for all of her students. Mrs. Stricker is a true educator, almost always the first teacher at each school day. She is always prepared and ready to help her students. There is great value in having her on our staffs, uh, as one of our staff members, who is reliable, steady, and always accurate. We can surely count on her to be available and eager to lend a hand, especially to a colleague who would benefit from her years of experience. Kathy is a treasure, and over the past thirty-seven years, the students of Sayerville have been fortunate to benefit from the, from her kindness, her knowledge, and her determined work ethic. Kathy, on behalf of your colleagues, whom you have helped along the way, from the students and families who have had the opportunity to learn from you and flourish, we thank you, and we wish you a happy and healthy retirement. Debbie Cooper. Debbie Cooper has been a beloved secretary in the Sayerville Public Schools for more than twenty-seven years. Debbie's first position in Sayerville, starting in 1987, was as a secretary in the Special Services Department, working with the high school child study team. In 1991, Debbie transferred to the high school, and among her responsibilities was calling in the substitute teachers beginning at 6:30 a.m. Debbie served as the high school principal secretary from 1993 through 1999. In 1999, in recognition of her, of her extraordinary secretarial people skills, Debbie was appointed as secretary to the Assistant Superintendents, Mr. Fife and Ms. Sutherland. She continues to work as the confidential secretary to the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Shettyack. When asked to describe Debbie, there are many qualities which come to mind. She is always the consummate professional, reliable, and very well organized. She is dedicated, not only to those she works with directly, but to the entire Sayerville School District and community. Debbie's willingness to learn and her impeccable attention to detail make her the ideal secretary. In retirement, Debbie is looking forward to having some Debbie time. She plans to spend her summer days lounging poolside at Frog Hollow Swim Club, visiting family in North Carolina, and spending the cold winter months in Thailand, I hope she can take me with her, with her daughter and son-in-law. Debbie, you are an irreplaceable person, and we will miss you. We wish you well in your upcoming adventures. On behalf of everyone in Sayerville, we wish you a happy and healthy retirement. You deserve it. Moving along, uh, item number five, uh, we are asking you to approve several leaves of absences. Item number six and seven, on pages nine and ten, uh, we're asking you to approve two paid coaches and four coaching aides. Item number nine, we're asking you to approve the hire of an occupational therapist effective April 1st. You can find that on page ten. Items number ten and eleven, we're asking you to approve some certified and non-certified substitutes, and that also can be found on page ten and eleven. Item number twelve, we're asking you to approve some curriculum writers. Number thirteen, we're asking you to approve some professional days. And on the addendum, item number fourteen, we're asking you to approve the return of a teacher from suspension, to withhold this teacher's annual salary increment, and to transfer this teacher to the Eisenhower Elementary School. Finally, number fifteen, also on the addendum, we're asking you to approve, uh, the transfer of a teacher from the Eisenhower Elementary School to the Sayerville War Memorial High School. Are there any questions on Vision 2030 Personnel? Okay, thank you. Hey, is there any board questions? It's time. I'd like to open up to the public for any questions or comments on the agenda items only. I will open up again for the public for any business that may come before this board. Anybody have any questions on the agenda items?
Hi, Allison Hornbeck, Seven Driftwood Drive.
Allison, could you use the microphone?
Hello. Um, Allison Hornbeck, Seven Driftwood Drive. Just one question or a clarification on the extracurricular. Can you, I, um, can you identify what does extracurricular activity mean? Is it just sports? Is it plays? Is it clubs? What schools? Is it all schools?
It would be anything outside of the regular curriculum that our kids participate in. So yes, it could be a club, um, it could be drama, it could be participating in the band. Um, as you noted, it was set up there cheerleading. Um, we did distinguish, though, between competitive clubs and non-competitive clubs. A competitive club would be the band because they compete. Um, cheerleaders compete, so that could be also considered a competitive club. But other clubs such as robotics, um, the chess club, and those types of things, those would be considered competitive clubs, but they would be considered extracurricular activities.
So is it just high school and middle school? Are you bringing it down to the UES when they do, you know how sometimes they have their after-school activities? Is it gonna reach that far? Even the, the grade schools, the grammar schools have, you know, after-school clubs run by PTOs and that sort?
If it's run by the PTO, no. But if it's a school organized and school-run club that meets routinely, if it's a one-time activity, no. But if it is a, if it is a club that is approved by a Board of Education, yes.
Okay, so is that gonna start, because you're approving it tonight, but it's gonna start immediately?
It will have to be read a second time and approved on March 3rd. So when it is read and hopefully approved for a second time on March 3rd, um, that is when it will begin.
Okay, so you're talking spring sports and extracurricular activities?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else in the board? Mr. Bowery?
John Bowery, 1210 Harbor Club Drive, Portland, New Jersey. Just wanted to thank the board for finally bringing closure for the, uh, status of Coach Najjar, teacher Najjar in this case, right? And, uh, since I've been too outspoken along the way, uh, I think it's a fair and just outcome, and hopefully everybody's pleased with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bowery. Anyone else in the public would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the, uh, public portion, and I'll entertain any motions for superintendent's report. Now, Vision Finance and Infrastructure, Dan, did you want to talk about, um, anything?
We'll have to perform two meetings. Is that done? You vote on this first, or we're gonna, nope, okay.
Well, yeah, I guess, yeah, we could, uh, just talk about that and vote on the agenda.
Okay.
Give us a short synopsis.
A short synopsis, okay. The first meeting was February 10th. The first thing we talked about was building planning lists, and, uh, Mrs. Kaprowski reported that there was no real issues except for the salt is playing havoc on the floors, destroying the finishes and stuff. Capital Projects, Mr. Pantiano, reported on Truman School punch list items, Arlith School mechanical upgrades, and Eisenhower in middle school had some leaks, which really bothered us because we have new roofs on the schools, so...
Oh, leaks from the roofs?
Yes, so they're looking into some, yep. Technology, we, we went over the new phone system proposal with Eric Bachmalloy, and he's, uh, gonna do some more research on it, and he's gonna look for another alternative, a cheaper alternative, so, guess where with that. On the transportation, transportation side, Mrs. Shedlock and Mr. DeAndrea reported to us that we could save $186,000 if we went to a three-tier system. So when we went, in trying to cut the budget to thirty, to three million dollars, we ended up putting the $186,000 savings into the budget right now, but we wanted to look for the whole board to decide whether we want to do with a three-tier bus system or not. It's probably more than a committee's decision to make because it's...
When is our budget meeting scheduled to discuss these things? Do we have a particular meeting set aside to discuss the budget?
The second one in March?
There's one in March sometime, right?
March 17th is the budget hearing.
And, and Mr. McEnon, on that, can I just ask that the board get some information in advance in terms of what that would entail, what it means, what it looks like? Because, I mean, it, it sounds good, but I, I don't know what the implications are.
The changing times, the starting times of schools.
Yeah, what's the operational impact?
Oh, then we need to have a discussion.
Yes, there's gonna be a big discussion in...
During the next Board of Education meeting on, um, March 3rd, Mrs. Shedlock will be giving her transportation budget presentation, and at that time, she will go over those changes. Not only the monetary changes, um, but the changes in arrival and dismissal times that will occur based upon, um, this going from two tiers to three tiers.
But that three-tier system would have to be voted on, correct? If we were to change from a two-tier to a three-tier?
I don't believe so.
You could just change from a two-tier to a three-tier without voting on it, you would just change it?
Unless, if it's not in policy, which I don't believe it's in a policy, um, it would not have to be voted on. But I think that we talked about the fact that we would like to have, um, Board of Education approval on such a matter.
And school starting times would have to be approved by the, by the board.
That is a change that would have to be approved.
Right.
That's what I'm asking, the change in time.
Oh, yes, yeah. I thought you meant to going from a three-tier to a two-tier.
No, I'm talking about changing in times of school.
Uh, Mr. McEnon, if we could just get that information in advance for the board meetings, because I know anytime we talk about changing school times, that, uh, is, uh, challenging.
Because what we're looking for is any operational impact that unforeseen, that uncovers itself once you make the change. You know, the impact of after-school activities and that type of stuff, which I think we already kind of discussed, but...
You know, in, in brief, it, it's going to, um, cause our high school students, like we, we spoke about earlier, to come to school, um, fifteen minutes earlier, um, and they would leave school fifteen minutes earlier. Our middle school students would be impacted by about a half an hour. Um, they would come to school about a half an hour, um, earlier, and actually would leave about twenty-five minutes later than they normally would. Our elementary school students would come to school about...
Wait, they would come to school a half hour earlier?
I'm sorry, later, later, later. They would come to school a half an hour later and leave a half an hour later. Our elementary school students would come to school about fifteen minutes later to twenty minutes later and leave fifteen to twenty minutes later.
If you could just kind of write that out for us so that we can see it, so, don't keep asking. Just the, the hour times. So was it, was it moved from eight-thirty to eight, whatever, that kind of thing, so...
We can, we can give you those times now, or make them part of the presentation, whatever you'd like.
Yeah, make it part of the presentation, so at least we have an understanding, the public understands. Because I know it's in our schools, and we can figure out and do the math, but just to make sure, no misconstruances. Okay, Dan?
Okay, we had, uh, people from Doyle Alliance Group explain our, uh, anticipated twenty percent rate hike in our health insurance premiums and our bad claim experience, so, uh, we're trying to figure out better, well, trying to figure a cheaper way to do it, or renew it, or renew earlier and try to get a better rate in there, but, uh, it's not looking good so far.
What is that dollar difference? Do you know what, Dan? The dollar difference currently? The twenty percent increase, what does that do to dollars? Slightly over two million dollars.
And on the February 10th, we spoke about the budget briefly. We spoke about some, uh, possible use of a waiver, and, uh, basically the committee said no to that right now. We're gonna, until we look at everything line by line, which we did yesterday, which I'll report in a couple of seconds, so... And, uh, that's about it for that meeting. And then yesterday, we had the all-day meeting, and we went, if we cut the budget, well, it was cut from the three million dollar shortfall to two hundred thousand dollar shortfall. We're planning one more meeting, hopefully to discuss more personnel issues and some other, to go through it again one more time, try to find two hundred thousand dollars so we can be at cap as soon as possible.
Do you feel optimistic?
I feel optimistic.
Very good.
That's all.
Well, thank you, Dan. And I know it's, it's, it's one of the less glamorous jobs on the board is, is working those things, so appreciate the finances committee's due diligence and the time you guys spend doing that.
Mr. McEnon, when do we get, uh, state aid information and, uh, and financials?
I would refer that to the business administrator.
Should be this, excuse me, should be this week.
All right, because that may, that may help us, hopefully.
So we'll actually get it before we formally?
No, that's extraordinary, we don't get it.
Oh, okay. Extraordinary aid we don't get to what?
We haven't even applied yet.
So you're, but you're not assuming you had anything, right? Is that the worst case, or you assume what you got last year?
Assume we got last year's.
Flat line. Okay, and based on the news that came out today about the state of finances that the state is in right now, that might not exist.
It'll be interesting.
Okay, thank you again, Dan. Um, we didn't have any curriculum student, uh, meeting since then, uh, policy? I think we...
Yeah, the poli, you've got the policies, uh, the policy committee met on, and, um, I will work this weekend to, uh, update the manual, the policies that we have approved and get that posted.
Mr. Walsh, anything on the personnel side?
Uh, we met, uh, earlier today. We talked about the spring coaches contracts, which will be coming out shortly, as well as the parent-athlete contract that could set in form, and, uh, we discussed some personnel matters, uh, involved with the 2015-16 budget.
Thank you. So at this time, if there's no other discussion, I could, uh, get in a motion to accept and file a superintendent's report?
So moved.
Any second? Ms. Pent, Mr. DePinto's motion, second?
Second.
Mr. Walsh's second. Okay, the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Balka.
Yes.
Mrs. Backo.
Yes.
Mrs. Blum.
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Yes.
Mr. Sayak.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. McEnon.
Yes. Okay, Delegate to New Jersey School Board Association.
Uh, three brief items. Uh, first of all, as Mr. McEnon alluded to, a judge had found that the governor cannot, uh, withhold the pension contributions, so that's gonna certainly have, uh, budgetary impacts in terms of the state. Uh, legislation has passed the Assembly, um, attempting to, uh, basically defer the impact from an evaluation standpoint associated with teachers, um, through the, uh, use of the new park instrument. So we're waiting to see when, uh, that goes before the State Senate and what the governor does with that. And then, uh, from the national perspective, I received word this week that, uh, there is no challenge for my secretary treasurer position, so I will be elected and running unopposed on, uh, March 21st.
For national?
For national.
Does that mean I have to go out to Colorado?
Uh, in two years, yes.
Oh, okay.
Assuming I get reelected locally in November, so...
Special, special committee reports? I don't know exactly what that is. Do you have anybody's special committee reports? Uh, any discussion about any items? If not, I'll open up the public for any business that may come before this board.
Good evening, Lois Santiago, 23, Astoria Court, Sayerville, New Jersey. Um, first off, I'd like to mention again, uh, thank you, Dr. Shettyack, for attending the second visit from Senator Cory Booker of the day. I understand that many of you are probably busy with other things, so I understand your absence, but I appreciate that at least one person came, so that made everything better. But, um, he did say he was very happy to come back here, and he said this is the first time that he's ever come back to a school twice. So I think we're pretty special. Thank you for closing some loose ends with Coach Najjar, and, uh, you know, i- it's been a rough patch, you know? We, we went through a lot, you know? The numbers have decreased significantly, but I think we can definitely, uh, take the stand to move, move on and start the healing process and turn over that new leaf and, you know, you know, start, we learn from our mistakes, and, you know, obviously, we made a big mistake, and, uh, you know, it's going to get better now, so hopefully. Uh, what I have to say now is something that is a maintenance issue. Now, we filed the paperwork, we've given a schedule, we've done everything, and it's been weeks since we've had heat on Saturdays in the auditorium period. We were here on Saturday during that snowstorm from eight in the morning till the pipe burst in the teacher's lounge, and then we still stayed here. And there was still no heat, and I looked at the thermostat, it was forty-six degrees inside. Forty-six degrees. Now, we've done everything, Dr. Piro has gone down to central offices and told them, and there's still been nothing done. It's dancing in jackets, which is not a good idea. And it's not just the auditorium, the cooking room hasn't had heat in weeks, and because the teacher's on maternity leave, we can't do anything. So we've been just sitting there with jackets, hats, and gloves. And I don't know what to do, but it is very, very, very cold. And being the fact that we've been having negative ten wind chills in the morning, it's not something that's very comfortable in raw, and it doesn't get very warm at all at any point in time during the day. Lastly, I'd like to ask again, I cannot stress enough the madness at the end of the day getting out of here. The traffic is unbelievable. I timed it today, I left here at 2:30, walked out the door, sat here for fifteen minutes before one car moved, and it was a absolute disaster. And I don't know what, there's gotta be something that we can do to fix what this madness is. I don't care if you have to tell somebody, it's just, you're parking in a fire lane, that's illegal and unsafe. As you can see, things happen that we may need an emergency crew like Saturday where a pipe burst, and guess what? a pipe burst, and guess what? Emergency crews had to come. God forbid there was an emergency. We need to have, you know, the space, and cars being parked there is not safe and not good for traffic, so, you know, it, it's not, it just, I don't know what to say, because people just come to me and just like, what can we do? Because it's absolute chaos. And I can tell you that Ms. Reese definitely can vouch for that, because it is chaos. I mean, absolute chaos.
Ms. Santiago, the information you, the things you had about the building, did you address those to Mr. Brown?
Um, I figured, you know, why not go to the, I, I didn't, I don't know.
I'm going to explain that to you.
Honestly, I don't know what to do, because, you know, I don't...
Okay, I'm going to explain it to you.
Yeah.
Building principals are responsible for the building, and to get things remedied quicker, you need to let the administration know, because they can make things happen a lot quicker than you waiting for the next board meeting and telling us. And also gives Mr. Brown an opportunity to fix things that would assist his realm of responsibility and authority.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to...
And Mr. Brown's not shy. He will, he will...
No, no, shy.
He will get things done.
Yeah, no, I'm not trying to like attack him or anything, but I'm just, I don't know who to...
I'm just talking about from a pragmatic standpoint, getting things done.
Yeah, I, yeah, no, no, I understand. Yeah, I just don't want to, I didn't know who or what to do, because it's been an ongoing thing.
Mr. Brown is the one-stop shopping for this building, and what he would do is he would get on the phone and call the facilities person, come down here, and see what the problem is.
Okay. Also, one last thing, I know you're waiting for this, food service. Yay, favorite part. This week, we had a outside vendor come in to celebrate the Chinese New Year, and we had lo mein and rice with a choice of beef or chicken, and the broccoli was actually surprisingly the right color green this time. But it had a very positive turnout. The only thing I have to say, though, is that we take one step forward, but we're also taking one step back. We may have had it one day, but what I'm trying to say is that if we have something that we know that works and falls within guidelines, we need to keep it like rolling, because we've had things here that kids are like, oh, this is good, and then we don't have it for three, four weeks, and then they forget about it, and then it doesn't come back. But, you know, different food tastings and stuff like this is definitely what we need to do, but consistency is important, because if you have it once and, you know, it doesn't come back, kids are like, yo, excuse me, yo, that was bad. They're like, well, they're saying yo to me. What happened to the food? And I have no answer, but consistency is key. But it, it, it worked very well, but, you know, we're working hard, we're doing the best we can. Our food science class is going to try to take a tour of the kitchen and try some different stuff out and different types of things, because, you know, it's stepping in one direction, but we got to keep pushing, because, you know, it's not easy, as I understand, but other than that, traffic issue, got to work on it. I don't know what to do, but there's, there's got to be something.
I would suggest that you go to a council meeting and talk to them about those types of issues, because, you know, we can't control anything outside of our property. That's a township issue.
Yeah, it's on the roam of the school property. That's why I ask you, because it's in the parking lot here. It's not the fact of getting out, it's the actual design. It's not working.
Yeah.
So I, I could go to the council meeting, which, you know, I'm considering doing now, but it, it's just chaos. And if you come here one day and try to leave, you'll understand, it's madness. So, but other than that, I thank you again for your time, and have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Santiago. Anyone else in the public like to speak?
Lisa Reback, 7 Charles Street. Very upset right now regarding the addendum and the personnel switch. I don't understand how somebody who's been at a high school level for 20 years gets transferred to work with five to nine-year-olds. Been in education for 19 years, and I'm concerned, honestly.